As such, my vote today is being made under extreme duress, under the threat of both my position and prosecution. My name is Commissioner Mike Clark for Washoe County District Two, and I want to express that I apologize to my constituents. I would like to start out by apologizing to constituents. It's with heavy heart today that I changed my vote. I understand many of you will lose faith in me, and I understand it. It's with heavy heart that I make this. And I'm not going to call it a vote, because it isn't a vote. We're compelled, and we have to do something. I'm not allowed to vote on this. I was recently made aware that the District Attorney's Office, Attorney General's Office, and the Attorney General's Office believe that commission vote in this matter is not discretionary, but as a mandatory ministerial function. I have been told that a failure to vote to certify this election can subject me to criminal prosecution and forfeiture of office. As such, my vote today is being made under extreme duress, under the threat of both my position and prosecution.
Meeting back to order. We will now move on to Item 22, Manager Brown.
Item 22 is a motion to reconsider decision not to canvass the recount made at the Board of County Commissioners meeting on July 9, 2024, and recommendation to declare canvas of the recount vote for the recount of the county commission, District Four Republican race demanded by candidate Mark A. Lawson, and the recount of the school board trustee, District Five at-large race, which was demanded by candidate Paul D. White. Pursuant to NRS 293.387 and NAC 293.365, the Board is required to canvass the results of the recount by which any errors within the election results are officially noted, and the official results are declared. If approved, the Board shall order the registrar voters to certify the abstract of the results and transmit a copy of the certified abstract to the Secretary of State.
Thank you very much, Manager Brown. I would like to first have DA Canderas go over why we are here today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, everyone, for being patient with this process today. I know we've had a lot of comment. We are here to consider the failure to canvass the returns of the recount vote that happened last week. As many people have noted, the commissioners were told that they should, quote, "vote their conscience," and while generally that is true in almost every vote, it is not true in the case of a canvas. And the reason is this. NRS 293.387 states, "As soon as the returns from all precincts and districts in any county have been received by the Board of County Commissioners, the Board shall meet and canvas the returns." And then it gives us a timeline. And again, what a canvas is, is the registrar comes in, tells the commissioners what she or he or she has got, any clerical errors where something may have been wrongly marked, and the Board takes note of that. They're essentially file stamping a copy of the canvas, and it goes up to the Secretary of State. As many of you are aware, and we've been talking about throughout the day, the Secretary of State is the official election officer for the state of Nevada, and the Secretary of State and the Nevada Legislature enact these laws, and it requires the canvas. And under the Constitution of the state of Nevada, the Legislature has that prerogative. So that means they are able to make laws to limit the powers of the county commission. In fact, a county is a body, what we call a political subdivision of the state. So it has the powers generally that the state gives it. So in making a canvas, the Board does not have the authority to determine whether any ballots cast were illegal or invalid. That is for a contest, which is a different statute. That is NRS 293.407. That's how you determine illegalities, any kind of fraud, whether people who were ineligible to vote voted. So there's a remedy for that, and that is also determined by statute. The Board, as it sits here today, doesn't have an investigatory power. So the legal advice of the District Attorney's Office is to follow the Nevada law and canvas the recount. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And unless there are Commissioner comments, I think it would be prudent to go to public comment, and then we could have our discussion. Are Commissioners okay with that? Okay. Madam Clerk?
First up, we have Stephen Hatch, followed by Beverly Dummett.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Stephen Hatch. I am a lifelong resident of Washoe County. Thank you today for reassessing your decision last week. I urge you to certify the canvas of the recount. Recently, people have come here to levy attacks against our electoral process. There is a clear difference between critically assessing the logistics of an election, its successes as well as its shortcomings, and sowing distrust in the entire electoral process. Anyone who seeks to cast doubt on the legitimacy of our elections either fundamentally does not understand the complexities of running an election, or are purposely working to dismantle our nation's fundamental democratic principles. I stand before you today to remind you that while public comment is incredibly valuable, it should be taken with a grain of salt. I don't have the luxury to attend every BCC meeting. I was fortunate today to be able to take time off of work and secure care for my child so that I could be here. Most folks are too busy working and caring for their families to come down and speak on matters important to them. While the new e-comment portal is a much-needed upgrade and provides better access, it does not solve the inherent problem that the typical messaging before this Board is being delivered by a vocal minority. I am here today to ensure that my voice is heard, to make clear that many of us who call Washoe County our home were shocked and horrified by the decision last week to not certify the recount vote. Please understand, I do not wish to come across as someone who is arguing for their team, as if this is some twisted sporting event. But instead, as someone who is concerned for their community and wants to ensure that legitimate votes are not being dismissed because a minority in this community are raising questions to the legitimacy of this election. Speaking of the election, I want to point to a specific incident. The incorrect mail ballots for Precinct 5020. They impacted 265 voters, and it was a mistake, a mistake that should never have happened. But I would like to make clear that the Washoe County Registrar of Voters Office handled this mistake beautifully. They acknowledged it happened, sent out letters to those to inform who was impacted, they printed and sent new ballots, and then they went back to their systems and remedied the core issue. This is the model for how government agencies should handle their shortcomings, and I commend the Washoe County Registrar of Voters Office for their work. It is imperative that we recognize that this elections team has overcome so many challenges over the last few years, including high turnover and loss of institutional leadership and knowledge caused by vitriolic harassment. I believe that this Commission's decision last week to not certify the election has already resulted in harassment for the elections team, and that will only grow. I would like to sincerely thank the staff and leadership of the Washoe County Registrar of Voters Office for their hard work and dedication. Commissioners, you need to do better. You need to be better for the sake of all who call this county home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gail Townsend, for the record. I would like to urge you to follow the advice of our District Attorney's representative and certify the results of the recount. I have listened, I've listened to people's comments, I've gone to Mr. Beatles' website and read his information, and it is not evidence. It's an assertion without any support, and it doesn't rise to the substantial reason for you to object to this recount. I heard a repeat of the 2020, 1,500 dead people voted, and I am still waiting for the spreadsheet, still waiting for the 1,500 names, the date that they died, and their voting record. I haven't received that. The commissioners, I know that you inherited the conditions at the Registrar of Voters Office. You didn't create them. But when, in 2022, problems were found, a consultant was hired to study, and I remember that when the county manager brought that study to the county commission, you wouldn't even allow people to hear it. I had to get that study with a Freedom of Information request. It's now on the website, and I'm glad it is. Yes, there's problems, but we need solutions, not this constant harassment and questioning of the voters of the ROV's office. So I hope you will vote today to approve the recount. Thank you.
Thank you.
Drew Rebar, for the record. I'm going to speak to one Commissioner, because the vote's really up to one Commissioner.
No, you will address the full Board, sir.
And as I talk to this one Commissioner, I appreciate what you did last time. Thank you. I understand that there's a lot of pressure on you, and for that, I'm extremely sad. For all of you that don't know me, my name is Drew Rebar. I was a candidate for Assembly District 40. Washoe County violated my constitutional rights. Mac versus Williams gives me remedy. The constitutional right that you violated, actually, all of you had your constitutional rights violated. Article 2, Section 1A, Rights of Voters. Each voter who is qualified elector under this Constitution is registered to vote in accordance with Section 6 of this Article and law as enacted by the Legislature pursuant thereto, has the right number seven to a sample ballot which is accurate. You violated the Constitution of the state of Nevada. You put ballots out there, sample ballots, Article 2, Section 1A7, that were inaccurate. So you're being told you have to follow a law that tells you how you have to vote? Be strong. Let the process work. See what happens when you throw a monkey wrench into it, and let's fix the problems. You've been asked multiple times, why don't we just go back and look at the paper ballots? Why don't we do that? Where is the problem? What are they trying to cover up? Why don't we want to have sunlight put on these ballots? When I went to the recount, the attorney that was there, I don't want to name names because somebody will turn me off there. She's sitting right over there. She would not allow the media into the recount area to view the recount. Now, there's case law about that, too. She violated the Constitution there. Case law is Fordice versus Seattle. The media is allowed anywhere pretty much that the public is allowed, yet your attorney wouldn't allow the media in. I think you're getting some pretty bad legal advice just based on that. So I've got Constitution right here that overrides the law, that said my name should have been on those sample ballots. It was not. You all, everybody in this audience, everybody that lives in Washoe County that's a voter, has a right to have that sample ballot accurate. It was not. How do you solve that problem? What is the resolution to make everybody whole? That's all I'm asking. Take the process. Let's make everybody whole, because there are flaws in the election. I pointed them out. You guys have seen them. There's a case in the Nevada Supreme Court. Let's let that ride out, see what happens. Thank you, Drew Rebar.
Robert Beatles, Reno, Nevada. Please put all my comments on the permanent record. You guys are getting some horrible legal advice. Let's start off right there. That NAC 293.365 and NRS 293.387 say you guys shall meet. Nothing there says that you have to vote yes or no, period. Understand that. Nate was right. The advice you're getting right now, horrible. Second, this morning, I received from the Washoe County Registrar of Voters what's called a pre-LAT testing. So the LAT stands for logic and accuracy testing. The pre typically comes before the election's supposed to start. However, again, the law was broken, and it didn't happen until after the election started. And then, when you actually look at the test report itself, it's in complete violation of the law. And if you're not familiar with what a pre-LAT does, without going super deep into the weeds, that's literally the parameters that the tabulators are set to from the very beginning before the election starts, and that's how it goes through the election, and then they do what's called a post-LAT at the end, after it's all done. So it was never set up right in the beginning. You have multiple Senate candidates, right? They should all have their own unique number next to them. They used three numbers for all the Senate candidates. They did this across all the races. It's complete garbage. It's in violation of the law. The election alone should be null and void, just because the test, the pre-LAT that they do in the very beginning, wasn't done. And then, Mike, it appears that he broke, it should be Title 52 United States Code, 20701 through 06, where he was supposed to do the pre-LAT with the Board, with people. It was supposed to be in a secure lockbox. We have the ROV that told us via email that he actually went in there by himself. We have it on video. We have photos. We have witnesses. We have the EBR report in front of the Secretary of State, as per 293.025, where he performs his pre-LAT during the election, conceals the thumb drive upon entry, upon exit, and that was supposedly your pre-LAT. Again, complete, you know, crap. This is not how you're supposed to do an election. I'm running out of time. So then you have the actual CVR, right? And the CVR is a cast full of records. I put it through, because I looked at it, saw some issues, put it through one of the most sophisticated AI platforms out there, it confirmed the issues. The guy that spoke earlier said, hey, you know, I didn't see what data you fed it. Well, I guess he's not a smart programmer, because there's literally a link right there to the CVR, which was the data that was put into it. Then one of the smartest mathematicians looked at it and said, yeah, it's all screwed up. So, I mean, just a ballpark number, you're looking at 20% fraud in your primary election to 43% fraud. That is not hyperbole. That is not any kind of, you know, it's not a joke. And then as far as the definition of extortion, is the use of unlawful pressure to compel, what are they trying to do to you? Compel the duty to...
Here's why some people want this election certified. They want to establish a pattern of ministerially rubber stamping all elections. Be aware, very, very aware, that that's the end objective that Democrats and nonpartisans want. They want to remove any possibility of opposing any election. With election fraud now firmly established statewide in all elections via the use of election equipment, they have control of all legislative seats in Nevada. There's no possibility of appealing to our state legislators to repair our elections. Removing the need for local certification is the final nail in the election integrity coffin. Well, maybe not. Signatures for voter registration might be the last nail. NRS states that election errors should be identified and presented to the Board. Who gets to present the many errors? The registrar voters alone? I'm a registered voter, and I presented errors, examples, and evidence to this Commission. Her machine evidence is credible, but mine isn't? I previously cited the statute that should result in decertification of the entire election equipment and system. Why is my evidence disregarded? Burgess is the only individual you believe? I was at the election system window in the ROV lobby from 8:30 in the morning until 11:15 at night on July 2. Know what I saw? I saw the Keystone Cops. I saw five of the top dogs in the election department spending at least five or six hours searching for mistakes they made during the recount. You think they might be a little desperate to finally fudge the data after a 15-hour day? I was exhausted. I know they were, too. Fudging the numbers is a very real possibility, but how will we ever know for sure? We're not allowed to count the paper ballots. We can't look into the computer system. We're just supposed to believe Burgess and her staff, who want to keep their jobs and not embarrass themselves with their failures. Give me a break. Take a look at this map. It shows state rankings on election integrity by the Heritage Foundation. Florida and others down here have the best rankings. This Board constantly talks about best practices, outcomes, and evidence-based. Just follow their lead. Stop making Nevada the laughingstock of the nation as 50th in election integrity. This Board is responsible for these rankings. Aren't you embarrassed? Your decisions for every election integrity motion that has come up has resisted them. This is on you. This red last place is you. Embarrassing.
Renee Resentis, for the record. NRS 293.387, Canvas of Returns, Abstract of Votes States. As soon as the returns from all the precincts and districts in any county have been received by the Board of County Commissioners, the Board shall meet and canvas the returns. The canvas must be completed on or before the 10th day following the election. On July 9 to 2024, the commissioners were required to canvass the votes. Per the DA at the meeting, he stated, and I quote, "You are canvassing the vote today." He also said the commissioners were not required to vote yes or no, and that they should vote their conscience. So they did. And now here we are again. So how is it that they are accused of unlawfully refusing to canvass the vote, as is stated in the writ filed by the Secretary of State? Jeanne Herman has voted no on the canvas for the last 10 years. Why does her vote and other commissioners who voted no cause such an uproar? Because the results were not to your liking, or that of the Secretary of State? Because this is uncharted waters? The DA mentioned other litigation that is pending. Why would you want to ignore this litigation? Did the ROV violate the law by ignoring the litigation facing the county? I appeal to you as a body to vote your conscience, even though I know that might change the outcome because of the threats the commissioners have experienced. What a shame that some parties feel bullying is the only tactic they have available to Please take Stephen Hatch's comments with a grain of salt, like he wants you to take I voted in the caucus, and my vote was recorded as voting in the PPP. My neighbor didn't get a ballot at all, and I know she was registered to vote, because I registered her. I went to the Sparks Library to drop off ballots, and two of the machines, at least two, maybe three, were not working. I asked why, and that person said, I don't know. So they're waiting for the mechanics to come in and fix it. So there's an opportunity right there to cheat. They shouldn't be messing around with the machines. That's why we need to go to just paper ballots, hand count, vote all in one day, results in one day, voter ID, and proof of citizenship. If the judges, the state judges and Washoe judges would listen to Beatles' evidence, I'm sure we would have answers, too. Thank you.
Hello, Cliff Nellis. And I was in the ROV on a little tour, and Andrew here was there. And there were actually some improvements. Carrie Anne's made it so that we can actually see the signature-checking computers, which is nice. And then they said there's going to be both on the thing. You know, before it was just flat, you couldn't see with a signature on the ballot, and I suggested putting it up like that, but I guess both are going to be on the computer. So there's some improvements. We can actually see the scanners. Ah, that's nice. Okay, so we can see the scanners. I was speaking to George, the media guy, and I asked him, I said, do you guys ever, do you audit the tapes? Oh, yeah, we audit the tapes. And then in walks Carrie, but she didn't hear him say that, Carrie Anne Burgess. I asked her, oh, do you guys look at the tapes? Oh, no, we never look at the tapes. So who's right? Someone's lying here. So already you have a contradiction. I asked Andrew, what's this? Okay, you sent out all these ballots, 300,000 ballots or whatever, and you get 75,000 back or whatever, and where's the other 250,000? Oh, don't worry about it. You know, we check the signatures. I just heard from a lady here that people can order batch signatures, and she's trying to stop that. So somebody's ordering batches of signatures, and then what you could do is you could take the ballots and just kind of match them. I'd do that pretty good, probably. So that's the only security we have, so we're kind of, we're saying, hey, we don't trust the system. And there is a real simple solution, and I have a simple solution for you guys today. I know you're under a lot of pressure. Let's table this and do an actual count of the paper ballots and the machine tapes, and that will settle it. It'll take a week, and then next week will come back, and then we can campus the election. It's so simple, but you're not going to give us that, because everyone knows, Cisco Aguilar knows, so does the AG, keep forgetting his name, Ford, they know they don't match, and we know they know, and they know we know. So it's not going to happen, but it is a solution. So I propose that. Perhaps you guys can do that.
Please enter my comment and this document into the record pursuant to NRS 241. My name is Scott Finley. I am a resident of Washoe County and have a military background in the United States Air Force. On July 9, the Board of County Commissioners succeeded in voting against certification of the canvas. Promptly after voting to not certify, Secretary of State Aguilar and Attorney General Ford issued a joint statement on the Washoe County vote and filed a petition with the Nevada Supreme Court. The only reason this is being reconsidered is because one of the three commissioners who voted against certification was scared into exercising the right to reconsider. Word on the grapevine is that all three commissioners are being threatened, extorted, and harassed. I'm hearing threats such as if a commissioner doesn't vote for certification of the canvas this time around, then they will receive a $50,000 fine and even removal from their seat. At least one of the commissioners on this Board has consistently voted against certification of the canvas based on valid concerns over election integrity. You mean to tell me that if this same commissioner does not capitulate to threats of lawfare enforced, there are now going to be dire consequences? What it actually sounds like is that these thugs in suits are trying to achieve is to scare commissioners into changing their vote. That way, it can be used as a gotcha for any commissioner who initially dared to step out of line and paint their actions taken in the original vote as politically motivated and an ethics violation. In the event that any commissioner here has serious concerns about lawfare being waged against them, were they to vote no, then why not simply vote to abstain? Legal action being taken against a commissioner for rendering a vote to abstain would look absolutely ridiculous. These threats by authoritative hands against our commissioners comes from a position of weakness and the associated fear of this truth being found out. On another note, I would like to add that keeping this specific item on the agenda constitutes a violation of Nevada's open meeting law. Pursuant to NRS 241, supporting material must be provided to the members of the public body for an item on the agenda, and the public body shall make a copy of the documents available to the public at the meeting. It looks like someone forgot to attach the election summary report. The supporting document is needed so that this Commission can make a fully informed decision, and so that the public can know what it is exactly that they are voting on, that you are voting on. Of course, you could choose not to remove the item off the agenda and instead take action on it, but then I would promptly file a violation of Nevada's open meeting law. How do you think it would look when the AG rejects a claim against such a blatant open meeting law violation? Friends, family, neighbors, we are Nevadans. Thank you.
Thank you. Cam Roberts, followed by Bruce Parks.
Bruce Parks, for the record. Good afternoon, Commissioners. As representatives of the people of your districts, you have a duty and an obligation to support and represent your constituents, free from coercion, threats, intimidation, and extortion, which is the use of unlawful pressure to compel the victim to provide something of value against their will. And make no mistake, if you submit to the threats and the coercion and the intimidation and, yes, the extortion, they own you. You're no longer operating under your own free will. They own you. You owe your constituents better than that, folks. Stay the course. Stand your ground. I heard what Representative from the District Attorney's Office has said. Frankly, I think that's a load of stuff you'd find on the south end of a northbound horse. Just my opinion, I can interpret the law just as well. And, you know, I know how to read. I don't have to have a JD to understand what I'm reading. And I come up with a different interpretation, as do several lawyer friends that I know. Stand your ground. Stay the course. You showed backbone last week. Don't lose it now. As far as the hand count of the election results, there's only one reason why you would oppose that, because of what it would reveal. I asked earlier today if you would please direct the Registrar of Voters I asked earlier today if you would please direct the registrar of voters to conduct a parallel hand count with the machines during the general election. You have the authority to compel that action by statute. Now, of course, Secretary of State's office had to get all involved in the last recount, far and away exceeded their authority. You have, as commissioners, a duty and obligation to represent we, the people. Now, I don't like to bring up the fact that this is an election year for some of you, but there is that too. Thank you.
Janet Butcher for the record. Please enter my comments into the minutes verbatim. I said earlier that I voted on June 11th at the library in Spanish Springs. On June 18th, my vote had not yet been reported in the polling books. June 21st, it still was not registered. Yet in Clark County, the same day votes were registered. Why was not? You think it's funny?
No.
And then somebody got up here earlier and said that the day after the election, that the DMV Eric system knew who voted. Why didn't our ROV? In 2020, we came with a whole list of things with the processes that were incorrect. In 2022, we set forth with $100,000 that were spent on the election group, a left-wing group that wants to take over globally or at the federal level. Then after that, we spent almost $300,000 on another group that also was of the same ilk. And still, we have issues with our elections. Still, we have problems. Renee said she got, and I think everybody got tagged that they voted in the PPP, which they didn't, and then it's wiped away. So let's talk about computers. You can program anything. It's real easy. Been doing it for 50 years. In fact, I'm doing it today, too. Any programmer worth a grain of salt or whatever, worth their nose, what can happen with a If you can't audit it and you can't compare it to something outside the computer system, what are you hiding? You all know, like, if you walk in on somebody and they all of a sudden hide something, they're probably hiding something. So I was so, I was thrilled last week. I was surprised. In fact, I was like going, oh, I might have been wrong about somebody. But I would also say that maybe there's 317,000 reasons why they changed their mind.
Good afternoon. Thanks for hanging in there, guys. Well, the water is certainly muddy, and it's going to get a little bit more muddy since we're all in this. What a day. You know, we have some things to discuss, and I'm going to break it down for you. This is about certification of fraud, plain and simple. The election machines that y'all use, including Bluecrest, which y'all contract with, it's connected to Dominion, which connects to Serbia. Plain and simple. You guys want to certify fraud today, and you're using a ministerial defense, which doesn't fly. I already spoke to this before. I think it's interesting, Alexis, that earlier you had a problem with giving toys to children based on something that you found offensive, a symbol that you found offensive. But yet, here we have your leader, who says crosshair is bad, but bullseye is good, on somebody who was almost assassinated within an inch of his life. What about that symbol? And here's why I'm bringing this up. You're funded by Plan Nevada. Your Plan Nevada leadership just said, we've got campaign ending news about Trump posting here soon. Her response, unless he's dead, keep it. You want to talk about hate symbols? You keep money away from kids? You guys couldn't even stand out here and pose with the very people who took a photo to give children, disadvantaged children, money? That's how biased you are. That's how your symbols work for you when they're convenient. Let's bring Riley back up again. Here's why. This guy, does he look familiar? He's your campaign manager. He's the guy that you paid, and I said $14,000 earlier, it's actually $16,000. He's on your payroll. He was there to harass certain people who were observing the constitutional process, not Democratic, that's communism, constitutional process for free and fair elections. Let me tell you who else is funded by this particular group, who fosters hate. Nevada Alliance, endorsed by Jackie Rosen, who turns around and funds the Nevada State Democratic Party, for which you guys are a party of. Attorney General Aaron Ford, Alexis Hill, Clara Andreola, Devin Reese, Hillary Sheen, Von Hertong, Marilas Garcia. Progressive Leadership Alliance Nevada PAC also donates to this particular group, which funds Alexis Hill and Beth Smith. And Riley Sutton is behind it all. Again, former campaign staffer. This is not okay. CrowdStrike, look into it. You're on payroll as well. Not okay.
Penny Brock for the record. It makes one wonder why on June 21st, 24, when you all meant to certify the primary election, it was up on the screen, the vote was two to two, it said motion denied. I thought, what? And yet, nothing was said, nothing was done. Motion denied. That means that was not certified. We didn't hear anything about that. And yet, over a recount of two races, we have threats of extortion that the commissioners that will not vote to certify this, they'll be thrown in jail, fined, removed from office, whatever? This is outrageous. This commotion is making national attention. I've read several news sources online in other states. You are on the radar. I have an article here out of Federalist, and it quotes one commissioner, she talked with them. It says, county pressure to rubber stamp election despise mishaps. You know, our ROV called those hiccups. After the county commission refused to certify a recount result following multiple allegations of misconduct, Nevada Democrat officials want to force them to certify the election anyway. See, this is all coming from the Democrats. Vela Washoe County Commissioners Mike Clark and Jeanne Herman voted with Andreola on Tuesday, however, due to not certify the recount results of the primaries after allegations of suspicious behavior were made during public comment. Andreola reportedly said, it was not the first time that we've heard of concerns of procedures, a lot of concerns of alleged mishaps, that she would not certify the recount. I believe it warrants further investigation. The sheriff, our Washoe County sheriff, is to investigate this. The commissioners could ask Sheriff Balem to investigate this. I would encourage you to do that. Many sheriffs in other counties are doing this, and they're shocked at what they're finding of the elections. This is getting ready for the November election. Washoe County is on the radar screen. I would remind you, constitutionally challenging the results of an election is not a threat to our democracy. However, rigging and stealing an election is.
Victoria Meyer for the record. Trying to figure out these folks who are coming up here, who are so emotionally charged to certify. I don't get it. Pro-certify derangement syndrome. I really don't understand that. I mean, we have a constitutional right to challenge elections. It's been done for decades. Democrats do it, Republicans do it. We're here doing it. We want you to do it. I don't get what the hoopulu is all about on, you've got to certify. I mean, what's the stake for them? I know what the stake is for you guys, because some elections could be, you know, if you hand count, you might see that there's a problem. So, and some of you are in an election process, so it could be problematic. I'm wondering why all the sheriffs are here, too? What's the sheriff? I don't know. I've heard about threats to some of you, arrests and stuff. Gosh, I hope not. I know Jeanne Herman has always voted, she's never voted to certify, so if that's a problem today, I don't know. It's not a vote when there's coercion. That's not a vote. It's not a vote if you only have a yes choice. If you don't have any other choice, that's not a choice at all. Following a law that requires you to vote yes is not a vote. It's not a law at all. And on the BDRs, why don't we have, consider some BDRs that, hey, maybe we go back to hand-paper ballots, hand-count paper ballots, auto, an auto recount by hand-paper ballots. How about that BDR? Can we get that BDR instead of some of that other stuff I was hearing about that didn't make a lot of sense? How about a BDR to stop using the machines, like so many states and other countries have already done? They've shown that they're, they can be rigged and messed with, and so why don't we get some, you guys want to say, oh, we have to go through the legislature. Okay, get a BDR that says no more machines. Let's hand count. It's easy to do. It's not a big deal. Your job is to protect our right to free, fair, transparent, accurate elections.
All right. I will first hand it over to Commissioner Andreola, and then we'll go around.
So thank you. Thanks to everyone for certainly indulging this reconsideration. Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to read a statement into the record, please.
Yes, please.
Thank you. I wanted to make some remarks about the path I have taken to get us here. First, as you know, last week, prior to voting no on the certification, I noted several concerns I had about the process that gave me pause at the time. Since then, I have met with the interim registrar of voters' office in an effort to get my concerns addressed. The interim ROV addressed my concerns and has given me confidence that these and future concerns will always be met with the attention and respect they warrant. Additionally, and also since the meeting, the DA's office has provided clarifying direction on the nature of our duties to canvass the election returns, making it clear to me that this action is ministerial only and required. From my perspective, the action is really a declaration of the election results, including any errors noted, all of which are sent to the Secretary of State. Our responsibility is to follow the law. A clear understanding based upon the legal clarification provided by the DA's office further cements my readiness to move forward today. Finally, the Secretary of State's office, in response to our vote last week, has emphatically pronounced that our duty to certify the election results is mandatory and sought a writ petition with the Nevada Supreme Court to compel us to vote accordingly. Essentially, it is my crystal clear understanding that canvassing elections, whether it's a primary, general, or a recount, as defined in statute, is a legal duty and affords no discretionary provision to refuse. In America, in Nevada, and right here in Washoe County, we can and must do everything we can to restore faith and confidence in our elections. Our constituents deserve nothing more, nothing less. Today is about certifying the results, which I stand ready to do at your call of the motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Andreola. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. I, too, have a statement. My name is Commissioner Mike Clark for Washoe County District 2, and I want to express that I apologize to my constituents. I would like to start out by apologizing to the constituents. It's with heavy heart today that I changed my vote. I understand many of you will lose faith in me, and I understand it. It's with heavy heart that I make this, and I'm not going to call it a vote, because it isn't a vote. We're compelled and we have to do something. I'm not allowed to vote on this. I was recently made aware that the district attorney's office, attorney general's, and the attorney general's office believe the commission vote in this matter is not discretionary, but as a mandatory ministerial function. I have been told that a failure to vote to certify this election can subject me to criminal prosecution and forfeiture of office. As such, my vote today is being made under extreme duress, under the threat of both my position and prosecution. However, in compliance with NRS 293.387, I would like to separately note that clerical errors discovered and take account of the changes resulting from the discovery, so that the result declared represents the true vote cast. I ask that the following information be noted in abstract, that the, number one, that the Washoe County Commission District 4 recount, the results showed that Mark Lawson lost a vote. However, it is unclear if that vote was deemed not able to be cast or how that occurred. That in the Washoe County School Board at-large election, the result count showed that Mr. White lost a vote, Ms. Nicolet apparently gained a vote, and Mr. Ross Dean lost five votes. No explanation has been given to explain these losses. The video surfaced demonstrating thumb drives being input into county registered voter computers, which may be a contributing factor to the difference in results. The significant clerical errors existed in both the sample ballots and printed ballots include distribution of said ballots that may be a contributing factor in the difference of results. That the, number five, that the county should review its process in coordination with the elected Secretary of State to ensure correct individuals receive their ballots. For instance, I did not receive my own mail-in ballot, but I received someone else's who does not live in Nevada. Number six, that a local candidate and single mom who refused her recount after receiving multiple threats has received multiple reports of ballots cast for her being uncured. Notably, the recount did not present information on any uncounted ballots in specific races. Number seven, that a clerical error exists in the completion of the signature gathering where a candidate was unable to qualify on the ballot. The clerical errors might have been a contributing factor to decreased in votes in the Washoe County Commission District 4 race. Now, I'm going to call on our legislator and our elected state officials to go back to the drawing board to devise an election process people can trust. Ideally, that process should include the cost of recounts being absorbed by the county should a major issue like misprinting ballots occur and an automatic recount for individuals to have lost by less than 3%. Again, I apologize to my constituents for being forced to vote to certify this election today. However, in the future, disenfranchised voter impacts both parties and all elected officials. I would hope that the elected officials who have ignored allegations of sexual assault on behalf of our contractors support our homeless services refusal to follow the American Disabilities Act and target a children's organization because of unrelated members' dress. Remember how they got into office in the first place and support the votes of the constituents. In conclusion, I want to make it clear that I personally believe that with recounts, the votes should be hand counted. Simply having a voting machine recount the votes does nothing but spit out the same results. This is nonsensical to me, as I suspect it is with virtually everyone. Yet despite my opinions, my hands are unfortunately tied with respect to what I can and cannot do as a commissioner. do as a commissioner, with respect to canvassing the returns. I must follow the law as written. In fact, within days after the July 9 special meeting to canvass the recount, I received a letter from Christopher Hicks, the District Attorney, stating that the other board members could, I and the other board members could be subject to criminal prosecution and forfeiture of our office if we not simply approve the recount results from the voting machines. I do not know why Mr. Hicks felt the need to intervene with these threats of prosecution if the results of the voting machine recount were not approved. You know, I'm going to say right now, I think that Mr. Hicks was giving me a heads-up to let me know what was headed my way if I didn't approve this, based on threats by other government entities. Nevertheless, after receipt of this letter, I contracted my personal counsel to review the law and the subject in my duties as a board member. Although we believe Mr. Hicks' threats of criminal prosecution are wildly overstated and unnecessary, the statute at issue is NRS, I've get a bunch of this, 293.387, requires me merely to report the numbers provided and declare the result. Put simply, my duty under the statute is confined to the computations. There is nothing in the statute that allows a commissioner to question the validity of the results, whether there was any irregularity in the recount, or even whether there was, there should be a hand recount to ensure accuracy. That responsibility falls on the citizens, candidates, and legislators, and the courts. It is my hope that the candidates and citizens of this county and great state seek to change how recounts are conducted by contacting their legislators and bringing valid challenges in court, so the integrity of the voting system can be maintained and results of our elections can be trusted. With that said, and because the law prevents me from voting my conscience, I note the results of the recount and provide the direct, and direct the clerk to enter the results. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Garcia? Oh, Vice Chair Herman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know how my voice is coming out, because my ears are popping still from a cold, but I just don't understand, and I haven't been shown, when the law changed, because I have proceeded as a commissioner intending to do all the right things and for 10 years. But going back a little ways, like to the 1800s, my grandpa came from Italy in the late 1800s to Ellis Island. He spent six months there and learned to love America. He memorized the Constitution, and he used to recite it to my brother and I and teach me all about what he learned on Ellis Island. The family, the grandparents, his parents moved to Seattle, and times were tough. There weren't any jobs. So, as a 12-year-old young man, he stowed away on a sailing ship to Nome, Alaska during the gold rush. My grandpa was my idol, and he taught me about life in America and, of course, our Constitution. He introduced me to politics as a youngster. He was the mayor of Nome, so I kind of learned about politics at an early age. And kind of, I guess, I followed in his footsteps by becoming a commissioner. Three times I swore an oath of office as a commissioner, to serve according to the Constitution, which I honor and respect and apply to all my decisions. But what changed? Regarding elections in our county, many citizens feel concern over them and have lost faith in them, and this is dangerous. One of my reasons for running was just that. Many problems, glitches, and all those other words that were used, whatever. I've tried very hard to bring forth an election integrity bill that would protect the people's voice, their vote, correct the procedures, that would create a fair and honest election in Washoe County. But there's no appetite for making our election safe or honest or according to the laws that worked. Now, after 10 years here, I'm being told I am doing my job all wrong, that I can no longer follow my oath of office or protect the rights of my constituents. I am very disappointed in the three people who seem to want to eliminate me, as they also swore oaths to office when they were elected. I've read every description of what canvas actually means, and I didn't find anything to match up with what you're saying now. I am proud to be an American, but being a citizen in Washoe County is getting kind of embarrassing, like I've heard other people say, too. There are hills to climb on, and there's hills to die on, and this might be one of My constituents come to me with reports of fraud in the elections. We've had people come here and report over and over and over the hardships they've had to get elected or to make, go to the election and have their vote count. And I always felt it was my duty to protect the voters' rights by not certifying a bad election, canvas. I've even filed complaints in the past, never got a response, but that's kind of expected. So, I just tried to do my job, and I cannot vote for this. I'm sorry.
Point of order. Okay, thank you for the statements by the board members. Any other board members have any other comments? Okay, I am looking for a motion at this point. Commissioner Garcia?
Madam Chair, I move to approve.
Second. Any questions on that motion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
All right, that motion passes four to one with Commissioner, or Vice Chair Herman in the dissent to not canvass the vote.